Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, come to order before we roll.
Counselor Kadim?
Yeah.
Counselor Hart?
Yeah.
Counselor Repoza?
Yeah.
Counselor Sampson?
Here.
Chair Pereira?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting to any medium attendees, or therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed ignoligible and permissible. Item number one, citizen input. Anybody sign up for citizen input? No? Item number two is the minutes from the April 3 meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve. There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, proposed ordinance for handicap parking. Broadway East, 126 feet south of Griffin. Foster Street West, 51 feet south of Warren Street. Harrison Street West, 484 feet north of Alden Street. And Pine Street North, 122 feet east of Rock Street.
Motion for emergency preamble?
Second.
Motion for an emergency preamble and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have to roll call on a preamble.
Counselor Kadim?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Repoza?
Yes.
Counselor Sampson?
Yes.
Chair Pereira?
Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings?
Second.
Motion to pass through all readings as a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, miscellaneous traffic. Prohibited parking at all times. Grinnell Street North, 132 feet west of Jefferson Street.
Motion to pass through first reading?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Pass through first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Items number five and six are similar. If we want to make a motion to take them together?
Motion to take five and six.
Okay, there's a motion to take item five and six together. There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item five is a discussion to amend the powers, duties, and responsibility of the Armory Commission from the Board of Park Commissioners to the Historical Commission and the Preservation Society to assist in future remediations of the Bank Street Armory. And that was adopted on February 15th of, I mean, put in on February 15th of 2024. And then there was a resolution that Corporation Council and City Administrator and representatives of the Historic Commission and Preservation Society to discuss possible ordinance amendments. And that came in in October 22nd of 2019. We have attorney for that with us who's versed on this, and there are also members of the Historic Commission and Preservation. If the chair of each of those committees could come down?
Chair, second.
No. Right here.
Well, they're designated. Huh?
This one's comfortable anyway. You can just push that one to the side.
Ken?
There you go.
Jim, do you want Alex to come down too with you? I think he serves on both. Without my help, those.
And I have additional members from the Historical Commission.
Pardon me?
And I have additional members from the Historical Commission if you need.
If I, if I put you all together here, it's going to be a violation of open meeting law for you guys.
If you need like one person?
But one person at a time, anybody that wants to share.
Okay.
We're absolutely willing to do that. If you want to start and tell us about these resolutions, or what you feel would work better for the Historic Commission?
Regarding item number six?
Sure.
Okay. And my name is Jason Bouchard-Naraki. I chair the Historical Commission. I think you need my address. 45 Gigolo Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number five or six?
Item number six. Regarding changes to the ordinance for city-owned buildings, the one glaring change that I can think of immediately, at least with, is with the demolition delay ordinance. Currently, any property that is on the city's register as significant structures carries with it a six-month demolition delay, known as the demolition bylaw. And so any, any property, once a permit has been pulled for a, for demolition, whether it's a whole or part thereof, there is the automatic delay from that period of six months. So the applicants do meet with the Historical Commission. We do feel that six months is not enough. With the example of the former Boarden School on Morgan Street, we had, at the time, we didn't have the requirement for applicants to meet with the Historical Commission, but we have made it a point of anyone requesting a waiver or to demolish a historic building, they should meet with the Historical Commission. But with the case of that particular property, we never had contact with the building owner, and subsequently, the building was demolished after six months. And having an additional six months would allow for additional time to, especially for city-owned property, any possible grants that would be available for an updated feasibility study, structural assessment. The state of Massachusetts with the Historical Commission has the ability to, there are grant funds for preservation work. There is a cap, but there are grant funds for that to at least assist in that matter. So going off of that, the year extension.
If I can just mention, I feel, my name is James Saul. I live on 577 Rock Street. President of the Preservation Society. I concur with what Jason has talked about. We proposed this a few years back ourselves, and just, I thought, I just want people to know that we didn't make this up. This is actually an ordinance that's used in other cities and towns. I think even New Bedford, we use as an example. And not to shoot ourselves in the foot, but just because we think it's important for us to consider, I mean, even the notion of assigning the one-year demolition delay to city properties, for starters, would be a good place to start if there wasn't an appetite to adopt it in whole.
Alex, if you want to give your name and address.
Hello. Alex Silva, 148 Purchase Street, also a board member of the Preservation Society. Yeah, just to echo what Jason and Jim said, it's kind of hard to believe that we introduced this five years ago already. There were more historic buildings in the city's inventory at the time, but it's never too late to fix a problem. Essentially, I think the bigger portion of the New Bedford demolition delay ordinance that we should mimic isn't necessarily the time extension, it's a matter of the process. And the NB Boarden School is a really good example that exposed a lot of flaws with Fall River's process and Fall River's ordinance. So the, the biggest thing is, rather than having it kind of sit at the Historical Commission, we should elevate the demo demolition, demolition delay requirement to the city council level, similar to New Bedford's demolition delay ordinance. Essentially, the process starts the same, where they submit their demolition application to the building inspector, he kicks it to the Historic Commission, then the Historic Commission meets to decide if that building is historical, if it's worth saving, if there are better approaches that could be made than just, you know, wantonly demolishing things for the sake of it. And then if the Historic Commission deems that the city should enact its demolition delay bylaw, that gets kicked up to the city council. So there will actually be a city council agenda item where the public at large, because not as many people watch the Historic Commission meetings, they wouldn't even know it was happening, similar to the NB Boarden School. So it would elevate it to the discussion to the city council level. The applicant would be required to come. The applicant would be required to appear before the city council, whereas they didn't have to for the Historic Commission, they could essentially say whatever they want. Not have to prove anything, and then just do whatever they want after they wait the six months. Didn't even wait the six months for the NB Boarden School, it's important to note. They, they, so I think that's really important, because it would give the community the chance to, as a whole, decide if that, something is worth saving, the best courses of action for that, and it adds a lot more protection for the cultural resources of the city that everyone likes to talk about. I advise you to review demolition delay bylaw from New Bedford. It's relatively short.
Counselor Kadim?
The six, the six-month or the 12-month, is that based on the date of submittal for the application, or is that after it goes through a review process? When's that kick in?
It begins once notice is received, once I receive notice from licensing or.
From the building?
Yes.
So, okay.
Thank you. This is just on property that the city owns as well.
And it's important to note with New Bedford that the delay doesn't begin immediately, as it does in Fall River with the, the submittal. The Historic Commission has to meet first, and then the city council has to meet first, and then they decide whether to enact the demolition delay. That's the vote of the city council in the end.
So it's not necessarily application to the building?
Yeah, well, that's what starts the process.
Right.
That starts it to the Historic Commission, and the Historic Commission could either say, this building can't be saved, this building isn't worth saving, you know, not even enact the demolition delay bylaw, or kick it up to the city council for a larger discussion where the city as a whole can, you know, talk about the resources that really belong to the whole city in the end, for the historic and cultural ones that we all love.
Does anyone else have any questions? Is that the only thing that you, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Just, just the, what, what's the criteria to, what, to deem it, whether it's savable or, you know, if it's, if we can save the building or not? I get it, it could be maybe 50 to send condemned, or something along those, but I just want to hear you, from you guys, what, how does that process work?
I mean, it really depends on, one, having a proper structural assessment done to see whatever proposed use is, if the, if the structure can withstand any changes to the interior, if there's any existing conditions that might be just, I don't know, not, not restorable, I guess, for lack of a better word. You know, an example being, we reviewed a demolition delay for, demolition permit for Sagamore Mill, number one on A Street. It was a brick mill that had fallen into extreme disrepair. The roof was buckling, the floors were buckling, and we don't have the ability to request the property owner to have a, you know, an updated assessment to see whether or not, and whether or not it's worth the ability to save it. But, you know, if we, we have that ability to say, okay, have you, do you have an updated structural assessment? Do you have eligibility for historic tax credits to rehab it? We don't have that ability. But to go back on that, it really depends on what a proper structural assessment it says on that.
Okay.
Yeah. With the revamped approach, the city could actually require evidence that proves that demolition is required, whereas right now, currently, someone with no experience can look at it and be like, I think this can't be saved. And then you kind of have nothing to push back on. The city could not grant the demolition delay waiver, you know, to get the project going, unless evidence is provided.
Yeah, I would prefer kind of that pushback kind of thing.
And that way, you know, it's done in a community forum where people can actually see it, and it's not kind of hidden away in a, not a lesser commission meeting, but a lesser viewed commission meeting.
Okay, that's all I have.
Counselor Sampson?
So the current demolition bylaw, you said a six months. My question is, you said that the Boarden School was demolished less than six months. Was that, what were the ramifications? How did that happen?
So if you really want to get into it, it's, it's a bit of a story. So they initially applied for a six-month demolition delay, and that one lapsed, they didn't take any action on it, so they had to reapply, and then it was during that second demolition delay that they essentially made the, I won't, I won't, you know, say what they made to do. The building became dangerous, and the owner did not take measures to make safe the building. So the building inspector waived the demolition delay in the safety of, you know, firefighters not having to go into and expose, you know, there were, the windows were left open, they didn't board the windows, things like that, that could have been fined for until fixed, and which, you know, the city receives revenue and not the loss of a cultural resource for no reason, without proper evidence.
How long was that building empty for? Was it an abandoned building?
Technically, no, because they used it as quote-unquote "storage."
How long was it used for storage for?
I believe.
Nine years?
Yeah, since it was, it was originally purchased with the promise of redeveloping it into housing. That never materialized for one reason or another, and it was, I think, in less than two years, or a year and a half, they went to the zoning board to request, you know,
Who's they?
Relief, the owner, you know, I won't, you know, name names.
But it's a, it's a private owner, not the city?
Yeah.
Right.
At that point, it was sold via, you know, the real estate committee and the city council. But they were requesting relief, and they changed use, you know, to storage, commercial use, I believe, even though at the meeting, they say the parking and the driving wouldn't work. I think the chair of the zoning board said that's their problem if their business isn't successful. You can actually look at that. It's 2014.
That happened in 2014?
Yep. ZBA meeting is on YouTube, thanks to the Preservation Society.
That you said nobody watches. So.
YouTube people watch it.
Interesting. And so I guess, I'm just curious to see what the city's take is on moving to a 12-month demolition.
Thank you for the lead-in. So, and to any members of this council I haven't met, I believe, first time I meet you, Mr. Kadim. Of course, we like to prepare for these hearings as best we can. And what I was presented was the agenda, and then off that agenda, went to the 2019 ordinance, and missing in all that is any suggestion that the demolition was going to be the topic of tonight's conversation. So I didn't research it.
Oh, okay.
I have very little to say, and I wouldn't even attempt.
I appreciate that.
To make an answer up. It was not thoroughly researched, but, so I don't, I really don't have any, I think, positive or negative input on this issue as it stands right now.
Yeah.
But moving forward, absolutely, if this is, was the concern of the city-owned properties, then, then we certainly will have an opinion to render, we just don't have one tonight. Okay.
And I, I guess my last question, I just want to, New Bedford has a 12-month demolition ordinance, is what you're saying.
There's a couple, they have a little bit of a difference. So there's some changes if the property's in a registered 40C historic district, if, so like if it's not in a district and the Historic Commission there accepts the findings that it should be saved, and they issue a demolition delay, that could be nine to 12 months. If the city council, you know, in the event the city council thinks it should be saved, but the Historic Commission disagrees, I think it's six to 12 months. So they have wiggle room, and it could be at the leisure of the city for, you know, the lengths.
Thank you.
Really, I think the process is more important than, than the length, but the length is certainly. If, if anything is done in good faith, I mean, I think we know construction schedules and stuff, you can't really make any miracles happen in six months.
I yield, thank you.
Do you yield? Counselor Kadim?
So the only thing I do want to, I guess, reiterate is the statements, and I concur with what you're saying, I think the, the process is the most important part of this. Just for my colleague, I think the city of Newton, they have an 18-month waiting period, and I think that goes back to like 1985. So Newton tends to be a very historical community, so I, you know, it's, it's not unrealistic to see 12 months or 18 months out there. So, so I would support an extension or something along the lines, even if it's just on the, on the city, city property. However, I think the process itself needs to be outlined a little bit more, so that everybody understands what the process is, and that we can make sure that it's being followed and abided by, because I don't disagree, I think it's a little concerning when you don't have that mechanism in place, or, or there is a mechanism in place and it's just kind of ignored. In terms of the demo, usually typically, the building inspector will have a group of engineers coming in to, to do an, an assessment of a building as to whether or not it needs a full demolition, a make-safe demo, and making sure that all the hazmat testing is done to, to assure that the demo is going to be safe. So I know there's a process in terms of what takes place for, for demolition, so, you know, I would support something along the lines of making sure that we have this established process. Now what that looks like, I think we need probably a little bit more of a conversation with, you know, Corporation Council and things of that nature. So with that, I yield.
Okay. Is there anything else that the Historical Commission feels needs to be changed in, in your, in the ordinance?
One other, one other thought. For city-owned buildings, especially if city-owned buildings are in the process of being sold, there should be a requirement, at least to make sure that there is some sort of a, if the building is salvageable and can be rehabbed, if there is a requirement to ensure that there is a deed, a preservation restriction placed onto the property at the time of sale, just to ensure that, in that clause, that ultimately, the building cannot be demolished, even if it goes through the, the delay, that all avenues are checked, because I believe that was the other situation with, with the Morgan Street School, was that there should have been a, a, a preservation deed restriction built into the purchase and sales, but that.
That's a whole other issue.
That's a whole other issue, because quite frankly, we couldn't even find the deed.
Correct, right.
I think all deeds or any contract should all, a copy from any department should be at the water, at the legal department, because they were all over the place and nobody had them. I put that resolution in, I don't know if they are being sent there, but every contract, so we know where to go for contracts. But attorney for that, how long will it take for you to write this ordinance, to give them the, the 12-month? Am I hearing a consensus of the committee that 12 months? I know Counselor Kadim talked about 18 months. Do we have a consensus?
No, I just, I just mentioned 18 months. I wasn't.
No, no, okay. All right.
I was just saying that it's not unusual to see something of that, that long, that's all.
So if the committee has, you know, a consensus for the 12, 12-month period, to do that in an ordinance, when would you have that ordinance completed? Because I don't want to say, okay, we're going to have your work on this, and we're going to table it, and it's going to come back in three years. I want to know that it's going to come back.
So in my short time, I've seen just how long tabling something can result in.
Yes.
Ultimate action. On the other hand, I don't want to give a date that, that would not, because there's more than simply myself and Mr. Rumsey involved in this, there's going to be other members up there in the sixth floor. To research the issue and to draft an ordinance is essentially stating at this time that the legal department is for such an ordinance, and I don't know that to be the case yet, not until I speak to the person I work for, Mr. Rumsey, as well as some other influencing. So my suggestion is, the council should pick a date for us to have an answer on that, not that far out. One to two months out doesn't seem to be that unreasonable to me. We're dealing with an ordinance that sat dormant for five years, it appears, but I think if we were given a couple of months, it would seem a reasonable period of time to come in with something, and to let it be known whether, whether the, if we're being ordered to craft an ordinance, that's one thing. If we're being asked for input as to what a possible ordinance would be, it's probably
Okay.
Pretty legal answer.
So I'll look for a motion to order that, I'm sorry, Counselor Hart?
Just, what do you gentlemen prefer, is it the 12-month is preferable, or is it beyond 12 months? Okay.
Counselor Repoza?
I was going to make a. Need a microphone here. I'll make the motion to refer to Corporation Council for drafting, and give them a 30-day window to get it done.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to send the item to Corporation Council to prepare an ordinance.
With a 30-day time window.
And have it within 30 days. There was a motion made and a second by Counselor Sampson.
Can I just, can we just, I just want to say that it's just not the time, and they were, it's the process, and it's the whole process behind it, and I just want to make sure that that's very clear. It's just not the 12-month, it's the entire process, and I think that's the, probably the most important thing, just what Counselor Kadim was saying, so I want to just make sure that that's in there.
So there was a motion and a second. Do we want an all in favor, or do you want roll call on this?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Counselor Kadim?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Repoza?
Yes.
Counselor Sampson? Yes. Chair Pereira?
Yes. Now, going to item five on the agenda, that is, to take the Bank Street Armory that has been dormant since 2015, and as such, has deteriorated without proper oversight, and where it is the will of the city council to move forward with a plan to restore the best use for the armory. Whereas, the Code of the City of Fall River, 2018, Chapter 54, Article 3, Section 101, the Board of Park Commissioners exercises the power, duties, and responsibility of the armory, of which historic property is not their area of expertise. And whereas, the Bank Street Armory was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1983, with a preservation restriction added in 2017, and the City of Fall River has an appointed Historic Commission with insight and expertise in the preservation and development of historic properties. And whereas, the Historic Commission and the city have the ability to apply for grants, funding for feasibility studies, and the emergency funds necessary to address and remediate deficiencies caused in the damage and deterioration of the Bank Street Armory, including but not limited to the roof, window replacement, repointing, removal of vegetation, and a heating system. Now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convene to discuss amending Chapter 54 of the Code of the City of Fall River, 2018, which chapter relates to public facilities, to reflect the current state of the property, and to transfer the oversight of the armory from the Board of Park Commissioners to the Historic Commission. And be it further resolved that the Historic Commission, in conjunction with the Preservation Society of Fall River, as the new managing commissioners, have the ability to create a subcommittee to focus solely on the redevelopment of the Bank Street Armory, including the creation of an updated feasibility study for future and best use, consistent with the preservation deed restriction. Counselor Repoza?
So I don't, I have no issue with the changing it from the park commissioners to the store commission. My only question is the end of the resolution regarding a subcommittee. Who would establish that subcommittee if we, this were to go?
I would think it would be the Historic Commission and the Preservation Society.
So members from both sides?
Yes.
Chosen by whom? Themselves, or internally, or?
I would think they would do it internally.
Okay. How many members do you have in your commission?
Seven.
And they're all here tonight.
Nine, okay. So just equal representation?
No, not all of them are here.
Yeah.
But some of them are here.
Okay. That's the only question I had. I yield.
Counselor Kadim?
So I had a question, but I think my colleague raised another question, so I guess I would just have a little bit of a concern about the last statement, that the Historical Commission, in conjunction with the Preservation Society of Fall River, as the managing commission. So I guess I don't have an issue, obviously, if the Historical Commission wants to consult with the Preservation Society, but the Preservation Society is a, not a municipal entity, right? So I don't want to convolute the, the ordinance when we're speaking to a, a. So, I, I don't want to convolute the, the ordinance when we're speaking to a, a commission that's part of a municipal body. So, I, I guess I would eliminate that from any draft ordinance that we put in there. I would hope that you obviously work together to, to establish something. The other, I guess the other question I have is the legality behind, um, what needs to transpire. And I don't know if it's just a matter of changing the ordinance. So, uh, for example, you know, the, the school department owns land. It's all city-owned lands, but they have control and jurisdiction, uh, over that land. So, in order for it to get transferred back over to the, to the city, uh, the school committee would have to take a vote to declare it surplus property. And then that vote, once that vote's taken, it comes over to, to the city. Uh, no different than the Board of Trustees with the library. So, any type of, um, land or property that falls under their jurisdiction has to be, a vote has to be taken. So, would, would a vote be required from the?
Counsel?
Yeah, the park commission to transfer that, that right over? Or can we just make an amendment to the ordinance?
So, again, Mr. Kadeem, a simple question deserving of a simple answer, and I am not prepared to render it to you tonight.
So, I guess if we could.
Let's look into that.
Yeah, if we could get, get that, because I just want to make sure we're not trying to change an ordinance, remove the, um, control. And then, you know, if we're two, three years down the road, it becomes an issue with it. And then this becomes the sticking point for any type of decisions that might come out of a, a court decision or anything like that, so.
I think that the park board had given the armory to the redevelopment authority. But the redevelopment authority then didn't take it, so it kind of stayed with the park board. I remember hearing something about that. Do you, Mr. Sewell, does that ring a bell to you?
It actually does ring a bell. I, I don't know what, I thought, and I expected the redevelopment authority to take control, I thought, at one point in time. And I was actually surprised that it didn't come to fruition. I don't know what, uh.
Yeah.
Real reason for that was.
Because the park board, really, when I asked them about the armory days, but, oh, no, redevelopment has it. When I talked to Sarah Page, no, we never took it. So, there was, there was a hiccup there along the way. Counselor Sampson, did you have a question?
Is it the will of your board to take this project on? And is that something that you're looking to do, looking forward to do?
I think the Preservation Society wants to be in a supportive role. I think it's Historic Commission who, uh, we, I actually agreed with, um, what Counselor Kadeem said. So, what the Preservation Society wants to be is as supportive a role as possible. And, but we're not a municipal, uh, agency, so we agree that Historic Commission is the right body.
And the Historical Commission is here?
Yes.
That's right.
A few members. Um, so, um, back in late November, we did, um, have a meeting regarding, uh, forming an opinion on the, the pending sale of the armory. And we had voted to, uh, for the city to pause the sale, which I understand that was not before you, it was either a yes or no, uh, to sell or not to sell. And, um, but with the information that we had received from, as part of the RFP, that was, um, received, there, there was a lot of missing information, um, one of which there was not an updated feasibility assess, uh, study on the building. It was, I think, eight or nine years old at the time. The deed restriction that is placed on the property, um, there were a lot of questions. So, these are things that, um, you know, if, if at the end of what our hope is, is that to, uh, get that missing information to, um, we are in the process of applying for, um, a certified local government. We should be actually receiving our final approval from, uh, the National Park Service in the next two weeks. So, that would allow us to, uh, access additional grant funds from the state, um, that only, uh, a very small amount of communities in the state have access to. And that can go towards additional studies like feasibility study, structural assessment, et cetera. And at least then we have that, that, um, that guide to say, okay, what are the next steps? What is the building, what can it be used for, while also looking at the deed restrictions? Because one of the, the, the big sticking points on the restriction, um, was the, um, uh, the prohibiting of major alterations to significant historical spaces. And the plan that was proposed called for the carving up of the drill hall into seventeen, uh, about seventeen or so units. And, um, from my, from my, uh, professional experience, uh, I don't think the plans for that would have been approved by the National Park Service in order to receive full historic tax credits. And, uh, so there's a lot of, uh, with that ability of being a certified local government, we will have direct access to the staff at the Mass Historical Commission that can review this further to say whether or not we have the ability to make any type of alterations in the interior, what the, um, you know, what funding is available. So, this is what we're hoping to do with having, at least creating a, a subcommittee for the armory that can focus solely on this, um, on that, that, uh, that property.
You know, I was for the sale of the property because the building has sat dormant for years, neglected, not cared for. Nobody talked about it for ten-plus years, maybe. So, I am all for putting it under, um, you know, a department that is wanting to care for it, look at the uses for it, and just not have it sit there. So, you know, you've had some time. Is, do you feel that there's something that can be done about it? You know, my concern is that it's going to go to another board, another study, and then we lost the sale and it's not going to sell. You know, have you been in the building? Are you excited about the building? Is it like, you know, it's a beautiful building, you know, it's got a lot of work. I'm not, uh, you know, an engineer, but it looks, it looks like a nightmare to me whoever takes on the project. But I'm hoping that whoever it falls under, falls in love with that building and sees hope for it.
And I agree. The, the building, especially where it, where it's positioned in, right in downtown, uh, which, you know, hopefully, once we have, uh, the idea with the trains running and so forth, we have more activity going on downtown. There are properties in the neighborhood that are, that have been and actively are being rehabbed for mixed use. So, there will be an additional footprint of, um, of residents and pedestrians and just activity downtown. So, it is a great building, uh, using the example of, uh, the Cranston Street Armory in Providence, which is many times larger than the Bank Street Armory. One of the, the, the plans was to have it, um, the drill hall, for example, open to the public and used for events, used for, you know, a flex space, a gym, or something like that. And then the, the head house, which has, uh, individual rooms such as here, um, would be used for other purposes, whether it was a mixture of housing or maybe office space, depending on what the, what the market holds. And these are questions that we would like to have answered with just having an, uh, an updated, um, study done as to what we can do with this building.
I appreciate that. I'm all for and in support of someone who's going to love the building, take a look at the building, see the uses, which is why I was in support of it before. No one has come forward, so I'm glad you guys are here to see what, you know, and willing to take that on. I yield.
You yield. Anyone else?
I'm going to tag, tag along with what, uh, Mr. Poushad said, is that we bend inside the property. We're, we're not intimidated that the property has to be torn down. That's clearly not a truthism. And, uh, it's important for us to make sure that the best use happens. It's, you know, it's an iconic building right downtown, and it's important that the right rehab and use occurs.
Attorney for Debt, uh, this went over to you along with, um, other information that the clerk had sent about, um, you know, the armory commission. And what do you feel needs to happen for the armory to be transferred to the Historic Commission?
Well, I'll, I'll accept that somebody may have told you they sent it. There's been nothing received by me in the office for today's armory. At least that nothing was provided to me. In fact, I'm not, uh, according to, I was requested to be here for item six, not five. So, I don't know that to be the case.
I thought I was c-cited on an email, too. Did you send that email or was it just to me?
I sent it to you and Alan on Thursday, but I might, I'm happy to confirm your email.
Yeah, no, I, I, I haven't received anything. And again, I, I pride myself on preparing as well as I can for issues. I think when I came here on the tax-related issues last time, I had a wealth of information, given the opportunity to research it. But no, the only, in fact, we saw each other last week at one point and that topic of the armory came up. But, but that discussion didn't extend into what might be expected of me here tonight for this meeting, so.
And that's why I said I want to make sure that you have the information so that you're prepared. And I thought it was, uh, sent to you. I thought I got it as well. But needless to say, uh, what is the will of the committee? Do you have Attorney for Debt look at transferring it to the Historical Society and look at the legalities of doing that?
I think we give a four-week.
Pardon?
Historical Commission, and we think we give a four-week, uh, timeframe and put it on the agenda with this, the other one.
Oh, a four-week timeframe? Okay, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I put that in the form of a motion.
With four weeks to tell us how, uh, what the procedure would be to transfer from the park department to the Historical Commission. You want to do four weeks or thirty days?
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Thank you, both. Anyone have anything to add? I think Ashley had her hand up. She wanted to add something. Ashley?
Um, yeah, so.
Can you come down? You have to give your name and address.
Ashley Giacunia, five zero one Harvard Street. I just had a little bit of a concern with the switch here, because per our ordinance of the Historical Commission, nowhere in here says that we are to manage any city property. Rather, monitor, encourage, review, um, create public awareness, and conduct studies. So, switching the property over kind of opens up a concern for me. If, like Counselor Sampson said, it's been stagnant, it's been sitting for eight to nine years in the city's responsibility. So, how many more properties, now that we open, open up this sort of a can of worms, that this is now going to be under, under us to take care of and fix the issues that weren't fixed before? How many more properties are going to then get turned over to us? And the responsibility just continues to get kicked down the hill.
To be honest with you, we don't have that many more historical properties in the city, so I can't see that it would be a lot more. But I know that property has been turned over, for example, to Preservation, the Fisk House, et cetera. And they've done a wonderful job, um, at maintaining it and.
The armory?
Reviewing it. No, the Fisk property.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Preservation has done that.
Yeah.
Um, as well. So, we're going to look into what are the, um, what are the policies and procedures to be able to transfer it over. And if something needs to be changed in there, then we will change that ordinance accordingly.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Right now, it just, it doesn't seem to align, that's all.
Thank you.
I have a question. Uh, Ms. Giacunia, you on the Historical Commission?
Yes, I am.
So, that's, that's important that, within your own commission, that there is some hesitation then with the, turning the property over to you.
It's so, if the ability is to form a sub, subcommittee, if the Historical Commission has the ability to create a subcommittee that can focus on that, and it's not directly, I guess, not directly managed by the Historical Commission, but by a, I guess, a subcommittee of the Histor, a, a subcommittee of the Historical Commission, then I, I, I wouldn't have a hesitation at that point. But, um, it, you know, having, and that was my, you know, my mindset with having the armory transferred over was that there would be a proper, um, uh, commission created that would be, from the Historical Commission, that would have the right, um.
Tools.
Tools and individuals involved that can, that can focus in on it.
So, he, here is exactly what I'm afraid of. We have a building that people are hesitant, and your entire board is not, and I get your, that's why you have a board and everybody's not on board. But we have a building that has sat for so long. I guess, so, um, we'll put in a thirty-day, uh, the Corporation Council is going to tell us what, you know.
And we'll find out what the procedure is.
What the procedure is to do that and, uh.
Then it'll come back to this committee.
I mean, it's, it's, it's concerning, and I, and I understand and I respect that you are concerned, because are we just going to continue to pass the buck? You know, I want to ask you, um, it's been maybe what, six months since all, since all this commotion has started? Has a big, large funding stream come down, like, oh, this, you know, five million dollars to save it, put a roof on it? Maybe there has, maybe there hasn't. It's just that I don't want a building to sit there for a long time. And I don't think that's your will, and I don't, I don't, and I, and I, and I believe your passion. I can feel your passion. I just want to know that. I feel your passion and I appreciate it. Um, I just don't want the building to sit there.
Right, and, um, and if it, if the Historical Commission is ultimately, um, without a subcommittee, you know, I, we have, we're undertaking a number of larger projects right now, but I, we could, we have the bandwidth, I think, to support.
This is a massive.
It is a magic, massive project. So, yeah, there's, there's a number of uncertainties, just trying to get, um, you know, we want to make sure that the exterior of the building is buttoned up, just to prevent any further deterioration on the interior. And just making sure that we have the ability, uh, you know, working with, um, with the cities. I, there's a grant writer with the city, working with them to make sure that we have, you know, we have the funding in place to get the first step done.
Thank you. Counselor Kadeem?
So, if I could just, I guess, make a suggestion, then we, we amend the, well, we don't have to amend it, but, uh, the resolution that's before us. So, as opposed to transferring the authority from the Board of Park Commissioners, uh, we keep the authority with the Board of Park Commissioners. And the, and the last paragraph then reads that be it further resolved that the Historical Commission in conju, I mean, the, uh, Board of Park Commissioners in conjunction with the Historical Commission, and then everything else remains the same. So, you know, you just remove Preservation, you insert Commission, keep it with the.
You put that in the amended motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
Do you want to amend it?
We got something on the air. Well, I, I was going to say, we can just refer to Corporation Council, and they can come back down. And I would suggest that that potentially be one of the, the amendments that are made or suggestions that come down.
Thank you. Anyone else that wanted to say something? No, we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
What?
Vote.
Oh. There's a motion and a second for the referral.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven on the agenda is a communication from, uh, the mayor, recommendation with the city assessor, Board of Assessors, on the elderly exemptions.
Hello, how are you?
Richard, it's been a while.
Hey, it's been a while. See you in a few months, though.
Hey, Richard.
Hi, how are you?
Richard Gonzalez.
Seventy-eight Horton Street, Far River, Mass.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does everybody have, uh, the limits in front of them on item seven? Pardon? We do have the order. The order from the city clerk is order that the attached recommendations regarding the Massachusetts General Law, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause forty-first C, for the Board of Assessors, B and the same, are hereby approved. I'm glad to see we increased some of the, uh, the assets limits. Counselor Reposa?
Mr. Gonzalez, a quick question. So, who do we, how many more people do we expect this is going to impact in a positive way?
I wish I could tell you. We don't know, and, and I'll tell you why. We keep a record of the ones we denied, and, and I think for this year, and I could be corrected, but I don't think we did three. Problem is, when taxpayers come, they grab the information, they come home, and if they're over the limits, they don't come back. And, and that, that, that's been a big problem. If we go back and you people, some of you have been around longer than I have in this stuff. This is the beginning. The, the assets have never been increased, as far as I know, and the income has never been increased. And I, and I remember coming to you guys last year, and I thought we were going to get something where we were going to be able to do this, plus maybe even look at the amount of the exemption. And I thought the state was going to take care of it. Finally, it's still in committee, and I said, you know, we, we got to do something. At least if we can go ahead and increase the assets and the income, it's a start. It's a small start, but then it's not bad, because we can, I can come back to you next year and I can say, look, um, with this in here, X amount of people came to the door. I think we've got the assets to, to afford this, uh, and then maybe look at the amount we give out.
So, the people that were denied, I'm assuming is because they were above the limit?
Yep, every one of them.
And how many denials were given? Do you know?
Three.
Three were denied?
Three were denied.
How many were approved?
Uh, we have a couple hundred.
Okay.
Couple hundred. But they, they're, they're old timers, you know, once, once they get on, they have to apply every year. It doesn't change.
Counselor Kadeem, do you? Counselor Kadim, do you yield?
I yield.
Counselor Kadim?
So general law allows us to change the asset and income levels?
Right, right.
Without, okay. All right, so it's just the, so we're just waiting for the amount?
The amount, the amount, right.
That's going to be allowed, okay. All right, I support this, so to me, it's a no brainer.
I think so too. Just for the general public that's watching the meeting, a single asset limit is proposed now at thirty-eight thousand and married at forty thousand. So for some, some individuals who own their own home and they may have just a small social security check that they're not bringing in thirty-eight, or somebody who's a widow and, you know, isn't bringing in that amount, they would be eligible. And the income level of, you know, whatever assets they have, but the income level is thirty thousand for single and forty thousand for married. So hopefully this will help more people. But on your asset, your, your home is not included in your asset?
No, no. Bank books, bank accounts.
It's just what you have, bank books, bank accounts.
Good.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to, is it a drop the order?
Recommendation to drop the order.
Yeah, motion, recommendation, drop the order.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
You're welcome.
And item number eight on the agenda has been here for a little while. It was a committee on finance to meet with various parties regarding Fall River Cannabis Review Commission and the process of approving marijuana licenses. And the committee on ordinance and legislation convened with same parties to drop the commission. I think we all know that we have plenty of cannabis properties around now, so if there would be a motion.
Motion, grant, please withdraw.
Leave to withdraw. The motion made, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we take a vote on seven?
Yeah.
Seeing no
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.